My name is Alan Duncan and I serve as Vice Chair of the Board. Our Chair, Eric Davis, has a conflict in his schedule today that prevents him from being with us this month. We will miss him. I call this meeting to order and welcome Board members and advisors, staff, onsite visitors, online listeners, and Twitter followers. Please note that you can follow the State Board of Education on its Twitter page at EdStateBoardNC. And you can follow the meeting online and see all the materials by going to SBE Meetings at www.ncpublicschools.org. For our visitors and those listening online, today's agenda involves our board discussions and agenda items, and tomorrow's agenda is the official meeting when the Board will vote on its action items. This week is spring break for many of our schools and districts. We wish our students and educators across the state a safe and restful week. I think all of us all need such a safe and restful week. We also want to thank local superintendents who are with us today and tomorrow. We appreciate your service and dedication to the students across the state. I'm not sure all are here today this morning, but want to introduce the superintendents we know are coming and ask you to please rise. Dr. Melanie Stover from Hyde County Schools, Erin Allen from Lincoln County Schools, Dr. Matt Stover from Catawba County Schools, Dr. Jeff McDaris from Transylvania County Schools, Dr. David Gooden from Sampson County Schools, and Dr. Jason Atkinson from Bladen County Schools. Thank you all for being here and we appreciate the work that you do. I would note that the dedication of our local superintendents to be at our meetings is illustrated very well this month where we cover from Hyde County on the coast of Transylvania County in the mountains. So we have full state coverage and we are most appreciative of that. At this time, I would like to take a brief moment to recognize the tragic events that occurred last week at the Covenant School in support of our friends and neighbors to the west in Nashville, Tennessee. I had the privilege of living in Nashville for three years while in law school and know from contacts from the community that Nashville is heartbroken, as is the nation. Three of our precious children are no longer with us and we have lost three more of our educators and support team. Since Columbine, that brings a number of educators who have been killed in school incidents to over 30 that have died protecting their children as they were here trying to protect their children from gun violence. Let us take a moment to mark the meaningfulness of their lives with a moment of silence as we bow our heads. It is sad to note that gun violence is now the leading cause of death for children and adolescents in our country. That is also true unfortunately for our state. There is no one who wants this for our children, no one. And yet, this is what has happened over the course of the last many years. This is not a time to argue with one another about the causes. Too much of that's already occurred. It's a time to stop and reflect, meditate, and pray for solutions, and then collectively come together to work on the implementation of constructive solutions that help and protect our children and our talented and courageous educators. To those who have the least, we owe the most. And we all know those who have the least are our children. Let us work together to eradicate the conditions that exist that have allowed our children to be in an environment at such risk. We can do better, and this is a time to commit to doing better for our children and for our educators. We spend inordinate amounts of money as we should to protect children from diseases as they grow up. We should have the same level of diligence, attention, concern, and thoughtfulness about protecting our children from this plague that now has harmed so many students and others. And we all, I say we all, as a community and as a country, want and need for it to end. Let's see what we can do to make that happen. Board members, you are reminded that it is our duty to avoid conflicts of interest and the appearance of conflicts of interest as we handle the work of this Board. Does any member of the Board know of any conflict of interest or any appearance of conflict with respect to any matters coming before us at this meeting? If so, please state them for the record. If during the meeting you become aware of an actual or apparent conflict of interest, please bring the matter to the attention of the Chair for this meeting. It will then be your duty to abstain from participating in a discussion on the matter and from voting on the matter. Board members, you received the agenda last week and had the opportunity to review it. Ask if there are any requests for changes to the agenda. If not, I request a motion and a second for approval.
Mr. Chair, I have the motion.
Thank you.
Chairman, second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Dr. Petrie Martin, may I now call on you to call the roll to capture the vote.
Dr. Oxenden.
Yes.
Mrs. Camnet.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Hall.
Yes.
Dr. Tipton Rogers.
Mrs. White.
Yes.
Mr. Blackburn.
Yes.
Dr. Ford.
Treasurer Thowell.
Lieutenant Governor Robinson.
Vice Chair Duncan.
Yes.
And Chair Davis.
All right. Thank you, Board members, for approval of the April 5 through 6 of 2023 agenda. We now move to our first committee meeting, which is, we'll proceed to our student learning and achievement discussions, which will be led by Jill Camnet, who is Chair of that committee.
Thank you, Vice Chair Duncan. I share the responsibility for the work of this committee with my colleague, Dr. Olivia Oxenden. We start off, as has been the practice for many, many months, with Dr. Day to give us an update on the K-12 Science and Health.
Good morning. We bring you updates on science and healthful living with our standards revision process. The first two slides are standard. There is our SCOS 012 policy that guides our process, as well as the next slide is the manual. So the internal procedures manual gives step-by-step instructions of how we go through this process, and pages 17 through 22 give the details of where we are currently. So we'll start with science. Science Draft 2 Survey of the Proposed Standards closed March 26th, so the raw data is now being analyzed and organized. Next steps, the DRC, which is the Data Review Committee, will meet virtually to review that data and prepare a report with conclusions and recommendations, very similar to what they did after Draft 1. And then the writers will come together virtually to review that DRC report and the raw data. And then they will prepare Draft 3 of the proposed K-12 Science Standards. Draft 3 is our last draft, so in the next few months, we will be bringing it to the Board for discussion and approval. So we're getting closer with science. With Healthful Living, last month, we shared that we will be bringing Draft 1 in the Healthful Living standards. We have a delay in that process. The writers are working through thorough review of data and their work together to create that Draft 1. So in order for them to do their due diligence, they are not quite finished. In the next few months, we will bring it forward for you all to see, as well as send out a survey, so that feedback can be given on that Draft 1. So these updates are very similar to last month. The DRC report is finished. The writers are still working, and next steps will be that that first draft comes to you all, as well as goes out for public feedback, and a PSU-specific survey. Those are our updates.
Any questions for Dr. Day? Thank you. And thank you again to all the folks who are working on this. These are volunteers pretty much across the state who are putting in a lot of hours on this very important work. So thank you to all of them. I'm always amazed they have the willingness, ladies and gentlemen, to pitch in on projects like this. We need their input, and they have been very generous with their time. Our next item of new business, Dr. Manuel is going to bring us up to date on a final report from the Acceleration Qualitative Research Team partners that we heard about several months ago. This is voices and context from the summer programming field.
Thank you. Good morning Superintendent Truitt, Chairman Davis, Vice Chair Duncan, and State Board Members. This morning, I will be presenting a high-level synthesis of the qualitative research studies that our UNC system partnerships have been engaged in the past year. State Board members have been provided a copy of the final report, which encompasses a synthesis of each team's findings. We are fortunate to have most of our PIs and co-PIs here today to take any additional questions if needed. As I reflect on the past year, I'm grateful for this opportunity to work with our UNC system research partnerships, which include UNC Epic, ECUREI, NC State Friday Institute, Duke SSRI, and UNC G-Serv. With this being said, our partnership journey would not have been possible without the support of our State Board, state superintendent, regional directors, nonprofit organizations, and the staff, students, and family, community members that participated in these studies. During this past year, we've learned a lot from each other and more about the impacts of these unique summer learning opportunities. I'm also thankful for the guidance and support from the founding members of our OLR team, which include Dr. Jenny Korn, Dr. Mike Morrow, Caitlin Clifton, Lynn Barber, and our current OLR members. Finally, I'm excited to share with the State Board and the broader community the unique perspective and evaluative impact that qualitative research has within the context of the summer learning programs. Next slide, please. The purpose of these qualitative research partnerships was to explore the meanings, experiences, and perspectives of summer extension, summer bridge, and career accelerator programs. It was also important to add that this context allowed us to understand how to target, design, and support student reengagement, academic recovery, and acceleration. So with that, in the end, we can leverage these promising practices across North Carolina. The focus of these studies were centered on the implementation, impact, improvement, perspectives, and experiences on the learning recovery programs, summer bridge, school extension, and/or career accelerator. In order to enact this vision, ESER 2 funding was identified to evaluate these summer learning opportunities utilizing a qualitative research approach, in this case predominantly case studies or mixed methods. Next slide, please. A review of our timeline for these qualitative studies, teams began in February/March 2022. Site recruitment occurred April through June. In November through January, midpoint updates were shared with the Board. Teams were also at that point finalizing their analysis. The synthesis of these findings are being presented today. Next slide, please. This North Carolina graphic shows the State Board region that each UNC system partnership was assigned, and their specific PRC or Program Report Code in which they conducted their evaluation. Please note that this graphic shows only the assigned regions for each partnership and not the actual districts that agreed to participate. This information can be found in each individual team's report. Next slide, please. Examining the findings across cases, these were the common themes for Summer Learning Extension, or HB82. These programs focused on recovery strategies such as engagement, strengthening skills, and unique credit needs. Across cases, there was a focus on strategies that promoted engagement, such as re-acclimating students to school routines, expectations, and social skills. These programs also encouraged student connection, camaraderie, and culture of support for students, families, and staff. Summer learning extension increased a sense of trust within the community and supported student connections such that it enhanced relationship building in the fall between teachers and peers. These programs also had a sense of autonomy and flexibility. Across cases, there was an enhanced sense of flexibility in terms of summer learning extension, and this includes support of adjusting classroom practices, approaches to curriculum design, and implementing a flexible staffing model in order to meet the needs of students and staff. Students' needs were seen as a priority for these programs, and it was important that each site understood the whole child and their needs, and it was exemplified in these The instructional programs were also enhanced through small class sizes, which minimized classroom disruptions. There was an intentional focus on class-student ratio across the cases for summer learning extension programs. And lastly, there were barriers to implementation reported that impacted student and staff. This included COVID safety concerns, building consistency of student attendance, recruitment and enrollment, and parental buy-in. Transportation challenges due to the geography and site changes, staffing capacity maintaining staff during or due to burnout, and staffing assignments per content level, grade level expertise. And identifying optimal length and timing and schedule of the start of programs was also viewed as a barrier. And communication, lastly, was also a barrier in terms of requirements and reporting mechanisms of the program. Next slide, please. Across cases, these were the common themes for PRC 176, the summer bridge program. These programs exemplified a continuum of academic and non-academic outcomes. For instance, in Regions 3 and 4, there was a focus on small group instruction through RTA camps, which emphasized literacy that was a key component of summer programming. Regions 7 and 8 showed that sites created clear supports to students that included refresher courses and core subject and supplementary instruction. Additional academic outcomes included dropout prevention, increased academic engagement, and expanded course availability. Teachers were also able to develop their pedagogy as well. Some of the non-academic outcomes included, across cases, summer bridge programs created supports that had several benefits for students, such as relationship building, conflict resolution, creating student support, and social support, such as SEL and peer mentoring within the programs. As a result, students were able to foster connections, build their confidence, and establish a sense of security and belonging in their site environments. Administration, preliminary planning, and overall structures were key to the implementation and overall impact. The legislation for 2021 required a specific number of hours dedicated to the subject-specific instruction. Districts had more flexibility with their time in 2022. It was evident that across cases, that program lengths varied in sites. With this being said, there were implications for students, academics, engagement levels, attendance, and staffing capacity. Summer Bridge also centered efforts on ways to strengthen communication with parents and enhance family support. Across cases, sites utilize a variety of strategies to support communicating with parents, and in some instances, communication was used to improve student attendance outcomes, their progress, and to improve overall programming attendance. Nevertheless, central to these efforts was the sites' focus to enhance the support for families. Again, there were barriers that the sites faced across cases that included planning, staffing, and attendance. Similarly, with 2021, these three areas resonate with various regions across cases. For instance, 3 and 4 noted that less students were absent due to COVID-19, which led to more consistent instructional time. However, student attendance remained a primary challenge and barrier to academic gains. In Regions 7 and 8, summer programs faced challenges with scheduling and competing with family, travel, and summer jobs. Next slide, please. For PRC 177, career accelerator programs across cases, these were the common themes. Summer CAP enacted career opportunities for students within their schools and broader community. These programs focused on creating awareness for students, career opportunities, CTE programs, and pathways. They also promoted career exploration. These programs also explored and strengthened community partnerships. There was a focus on extranormal learning, where students took daily field trips to well-known local industries. These programs also reengaged students in school. For CAP programs, social development was a priority. Summer CAP also exposed students to educational partnerships and opportunities. There were diverse experiences exemplified in CAP programming. These included visiting work sites, colleges, and social outings. CAP also created program flexibility. CAP programs were not constrained by the structures that typically govern the school day. Sites took this as an opportunity to offer programs that were not logistically feasible during the school year. These programs also faced barriers, which included time constraints, coordination programs, and consistency of district expectations. Next slide, please. These are some of the contrasting themes across cases. Targeting and recruitment of students varied by district and region. It was clear that in most of the studies, sites relied on a variety of data and recommendations to target students who participated in these programs. However, it was noted how students should be identified through district or state criteria, and students who were served through the programs, whether or not it was open to all students or at-risk students, varied. Teacher engagement, even though there were concerns about staffing capacity across the studies for both years, I just wanted to note that summer programming gave staff a sense of normalcy, reengagement in the work, collegial support, and camaraderie from peers and administration. Staff expertise and interest was also a divergent theme. Staffing challenges were experienced in Summer 21 and Summer 22 PAC programs. Matching the content level, grade level expertise with teacher interest varied with summer learning assignments. There were acceleration opportunities for summer learning programs, especially in the western part of the state. Not only did this support students who struggled academically, but also leveraged opportunities to help students get ahead with course requirements through credit acceleration. ESER funds and usage did not only support the implementation of summer learning programs, but also remove barriers such as transportation, learning recovery, acceleration, supports, and enrichment experiences. There was also curricular flexibility and turnkey curriculum materials. As mentioned earlier, flexibility in curriculum is used or viewed as an asset. However, there are benefits to districts providing instructional resources that require little teacher preparation and planning. Additionally, and lastly, the use of learning management platforms, or LMS, in Regions 7 and 8 was a logistic necessity, and as they lacked the staff capacity to meet the needs of students, as well as a programmatic decision to decrease teacher burden and increase teachers being receptive to teach over the summer. Last slide, please. These are the recommendations for policy and promising practices as it pertains to the outcomes across the studies. First, increased support for fiscal and human resources tied to summer learning. There are clear indications in each study that financial and human resources were stretched. This impacted the ability to provide optimal summer learning experiences. Staff shortages were clearly a concern amongst cases. This included support positions such as TAs. Notification, communication, and timing of funding support matters to the recruitment of staff for these types of programs. The program length and timing, the start date, the end date, duration, and length of the day, communication, and overall state and district guidance matter for the organizational design of summer learning programs. It was clear in these studies that not only is careful consideration needed for these areas, but there are implications for their effectiveness. Integrate mental health support into the design of all academic planning. Social-emotional learning competencies integration and daily practices were integral to summer learning programs, especially in terms of the impact of COVID, which has had severe impact on students, staff, schools, and communities. With these noted differences, it did vary. It's recommended that integrating mental health services may aid school communities in reinforcing social-emotional support and behavioral support during the school year. Extend practices for summer learning throughout the school year. The evidence shared with you all in these studies speak to the practices and support that can serve as a foundation towards student buy-in into their academic support. Collaborative sharing across districts was clearly evident, and curriculum and instructional resources and materials, sharing of those resources was very important. And each qualitative study networks of support existed and were leveraged to enhance professional learning, access to resources, and camaraderie amongst teachers and staff and district staff. And lastly, strengthening relationships is a catalyst for improving academic outcomes. Noted in these studies was the intentionality on fostering connections, students, educators, and communities. This not only builds a sense of trust, but also can serve as an important and powerful leveraging point to improve academic outcomes. Next slide, please. Thank you for your time and support, and I will now take questions from the State Board, if any.
Questions for Dr. Manuel or some of our research partners that I gather are.
I don't have any questions, but I do want to thank you, Dr. Manuel, for being a part of the OLR team. This is a great report, and you and your colleagues have done amazing research. And I just want to stress that we have this research because of the Office of Learning Recovery Research and Evaluation Team that has been funded with ESER dollars that will expire. And I would like to thank the Governor's Office for including these positions as permanent in his budget, and will hope that the legislature will follow suit and also fund these positions so that we can continue to do this kind of research.
Thank you.
I do have one question. How are these findings going to be shared with districts across the state?
Thank you. That's a really good question. We, as a team, have been working with our partnerships. We value their input around disseminating the findings, because it's important that this information is actionable for districts. So we're working on a communication plan. One of the things that we recently have done is we worked with Epic to do a brief webinar around summer learning that happened, that occurred last week, last Monday, and just as a starting point to kind of talk about what makes effective summer programming. Some of the other things we tossed around is doing a brief, doing something with the ARP convening this summer, doing a white paper with our OLR Research and Recovery Roundup. So we're working on ideas to make sure that there is some follow-up and dissemination to the districts, so that way they can take this and plan meaningful action with it.
Right.
Thank you.
With regard to academic data that might be generated from those summer learning opportunities, do we have the capacity to track those students during the subsequent academic year to see if the intervention that was made in the summer translates to better academic performance during the year as the student progresses?
I believe we do. I think, and that was a great question, because a part of it that we found even with the qualitative work is understanding who the students are within the sites and understanding how can we make sure that there are better academic outcomes from these programs. So our work with Epic that we're doing with the IES grant, we are looking at ways to track cohort data, as well as identifying, making sure that the data requirements that are reported from sites are consistent. So hence, we have attendance reporting requirements for the program that just happened this summer, and we're working through that information now. So yes, it is, we are capable of doing that.
Greg Alcorn used to sit in this seat, and he would, his three letters were ROI. And so with the enormous amount of funding that's been provided for us to implement the programs, I would really like for us to see, long-term, whether the impact that's being made, not social-emotional, off the charts. Having students in our care during that time, you can't measure that, but particularly because we are in a continuous journey of, I'm going to call it, catch-up. I think it's important for us to find out whether what we're doing to implement practices during the summer translate to better performance during the year.
Thank you. Yes, I agree.
Following up on what Ms. White said, is there any information gathered on how many students are in the program more than one year consecutive years? Because it's a good sign to me if they're in the program one year and then they aren't the next. Real progress has been made. And also, if you can analyze the number of students that need the summer program compared to the ratings of schools they came from.
Yes, sir. Again, that is, that's more of a quantitative question, but with our IES grant that we're working with Epic, that's something that we are working on. And I know that there was some demographic information reported in January from Epic regarding that information. So again, we are planning to track through cohorts.
Oh, sorry. Yes. Thank you, Ms. Camnet. So thank you so much for that fine report. My question, I need to understand, my head, how, I know that we have in legislation a requirement around students in grades 1 through 3 who must attend summer school based on reading performance and the summer school programs for reading. So how does this initiative, the BRIDGE initiative, compare, or does that initiative encapsulate other summer school programs, or how does that work?
Yes, that's another good question. In terms of the findings that were in this report, I know specifically NC State, FI, Duke had a lot of themes that related to literacy and RTA camps. So there was some crossover of these types of programs. So I can ask, I don't know if we have time to have Dr. Kellogg or either Dr. Spearling speak to that specifically in their report.
Perhaps in a later time, because that is a question that will probably stay in my head for a while.
Yes. It's a good question. Yes.
And I'll to comment on Dr. Oxenden's question. My understanding of Read to Achieve Summer Camps is that no two look alike. So there's not a lot of consistency. There's no statute that requires those summer programs to look the same.
Oh, I'm not saying that. That's not my point. My point is, would the BRIDGE program, would there be an overlap in terms of students being served both ways?
And see, that goes back to tracking who the students are. And again, that is a site decision as far as how they, we provide them the required... And again, that is a site decision as far as how they, we provide them the required, what the general guidelines are in terms of the information, in terms of the data we collect on our end, but in terms of how that's being implemented on site, that's a site decision.
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes.
Just commenting out of the chair, if I do. Help me here. The summer programs are required to be offer, but the parent is not required to stand against her child?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Am I correct with that?
Yes.
Would that not affect everything that we have talked about in this one? I'm not actually going to answer that question. That's in the back of my mind, always has been. There's something there that's not exactly congruent with academic performance. When you offer, but you're not required to meet, and those kids that you were talking about, get lost in the soul sometimes, and we can't really identify them. But knowing them the next year is so true, it's like that, we can track those kids. They can be tracked.
We can.
We can.
We do, we do. And remember, eighty-six percent of students who were asked to attend, attended. So, that's a great num, that's, you know, almost all students who were identified as being at risk and needing to attend, attended the summer.
Well, I just wanted to put that back to you. There's something about that that's ringing to me, you offer, but you're not required to sing.
Well, that was one of your findings, I believe, something about parent concerns.
Yep, parental buy-in, and another area that we need to look at is family engagement. Through another component of the IES study with Epic, we're going to start looking at family engagement, the supportive, looking at the work with charter schools and Big Twelve schools. So, some components that were not necessarily covered in these findings, but we're looking at other ways to kind of hit those areas through another study.
Wouldn't, excuse me, wouldn't, would eighty-six percent participate if we're tracking? What kind of information would it be useful to track the fourteen percent didn't in comparison? I mean, I think we may know the answer already, it's suspected.
So, just to clear up a little bit of this, so, some of this work is related to both Session Law 2021-7, which was the summer school extension program required by the General Assembly post-COVID. Some of the other work is related to other summer programs that were put in place using local COVID dollars or the PRCs that we funded. So, we talked about who attended the 2021-7, the superintendent's right, so it's eighty-six percent of the children who enrolled in that program were identified as at-risk. And when we looked at the student performance, it matched. So, in terms of where they were in their pre-assessment, those students were the students who needed to be identified, and they attended the program. The other programs, again, as Mr. Hall mentioned, these are not compulsory programs. They're voluntary programs. Parents enroll their children. So, we have been working to try to track the kids who are participating in these programs. Whether they went and participated year over year is a little difficult to track over time because we're not consistently putting them in the system, right? And there is some local decision-making around what these programs look like. To Dr. Oxendine's point, how do you measure whether or not a student is participating in multiple programs? When we think about that, right, the summer reading camp versus the Bridge Academy. So, we did, in fact, have students participate in both summer reading camp and 2021-7. And what they did was they wrapped those programs into one, because 2021-7 required other enrichment activities on top of just reading, which is what the reading camp requires. So, they had to do reading, math, science, and then have other enrichment, art, music, sports, and things of that nature. The Bridge Academies did not have that same requirement in terms of the grade levels that we required. Twenty-two-one-seven, again, was a K-12 program. The Bridge Academies are not necessarily K-12. The idea was we had limited funds, and so we needed to target those programs. So, we targeted transition years for kids. So, kids moving from elementary to middle school, middle school to high school, eleventh graders not on track to graduate, to graduate. So, you may or may not have some overlap at the lower grade with the reading camp and the Bridge Academy, and so you wouldn't have that, essentially, you wouldn't have that overlap. So, does that answer the question that you asked, Rob?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you both for a great presentation and good discussion around the case. We have two items of our first read, SLA 1, is North Carolina Digital Learning Competencies for Educators and Administrators, and I believe Dr. McBride is going to open this house.
Good morning, board members. Superintendent Truitt, today I am bringing you a recommendation for updating our current digital learning competencies. Slide, thank you. The North Carolina Digital Learning Competencies are part of state legislation and require that the State Board integrate digital teaching and learning into the requirements for licensing programs, licensure renewal, and lateral entry licensure. Next slide. After the adoption of our first version of the North Carolina Digital Learning Plan, the current digital learning competencies were crafted and adopted by the State Board in 2016. These competencies provide guidance to ensure professional learning is aligned with the state digital learning plan and researched best practices for integrating technology in the classroom. Next slide. This update is necessary for a couple of reasons. First, we need to ensure alignment with other items that have been adopted by the Board in the last few years. This includes the 2019 adoption of the North Carolina Digital Learning Standards for Students, and the August 2022 adoption of the updated North Carolina Digital Learning Plan. But to be quite honest, the current digital learning competencies are outdated. They are outdated not only because the student standards and the digital learning plan were recently updated, but also because the number of digital devices and the research around the implementation of digital resources has matured. It is no longer acceptable practice to have a student use a computer to run a learning program in isolation. We know that using devices for these simplistic tasks leads students, parents, and educators to technology fatigue and disengages the student in learning, in the learning process. The professional learning offered to our teachers under the digital learning competencies cannot focus on how to use a technology tool in isolation. Instead, it must focus on how to use the best technology-rich pedagogical practices and focus on students interacting with technology at a deeper level. By updating these digital learning competencies, we can shift the usage of these resources to support the goals outlined in Portrait of a Graduate, and to promote the use of technology in the classroom to focus on supporting students as creators and improve the learning experience for all. Next slide. The Office of Digital Teaching and Learning did not come up with this recommendation on its own. To ensure the DLCs were updated in a way that was most beneficial to educators, we pulled together four working groups. These job-alike working groups included classroom teachers, administrators, coaches, and school library media coordinators from each of the eight regions. Next slide. These working groups have all come to a consensus to bring you this recommendation. We recommend that the State Board updates the North Carolina Digital Learning Competencies to align with the standards created by the International Society for Technology and Education. This would create greater alignment with the North Carolina Digital Learning Standards for Students, the North Carolina Digital Learning Plan, and would provide specific language that focuses directly on using technology to create the best possible learning experiences for students. Next slide. Are there any questions from the Board?
Questions about this competency. Once again, teachers across the state came together to work on this with us.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Hearing no questions, we will, thank you, Dr. Martin McBride. We will move on to SLA 2 and ask Dr. Day to come back up. This is a quick review of some recommended changes to the North Carolina Standard Course of Study Internal Procedures Manual, which Dr. Day has been referencing every month as we went through these processes. Dr. Day.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm bringing forward some recommended changes to the manual. This first slide talks about the purpose of the manual, so it is a detailed process for the review and revision that we go through for all content areas across the standard course of study. It acts as our standard operating procedures guide. Anyone can pick this up across any other content areas and do it in a very uniformed, succinct, consistent manner across. The manual was first approved by the Board last February, February 2022. Here's our policy. We talk about the policy each month. This is the policy that our manual follows. On the next couple of slides, we will talk through the proposed changes. I won't go through all, some are very minor, and you have an attachment of these charts with details on these. On this slide, one of the changes would be, or an addition, is around the extended content standards for science. They have gone alongside, for the most part, through the process with our team and our writers and for the extended content standards for science. So, we've added language there to clarify, oh, yes, Office of Exceptional Children, and we worked alongside with them to get this wording. So, it shows where the alignment in the process is, as well as differences between their process and the process that we follow. On the next slide, there is just clarified language to match the content of the manual. We just made it a little more succinct and clarify what the purpose of that manual actually is. Again, on the next slide, we have extended content standards language. This just specifies the roles and responsibilities of the content, for the content, and the extended content teams. So, this is, this speaks to the extended content standards. The next one, we have a series of templates around the standard, or the survey templates, rather. There were some updates that were made based on lessons learned that we've gone through with science and healthful living, as well as feedback from the survey governance group. For example, just the way the standards were presented on the slide, on the survey, we updated that so it was a little more user-friendly. We also added the percentage of LEAs that must respond to that very first survey. And that very first survey is feedback on the current standard course of study. And if you'll remember, with science and healthful living, we worked to get to seventy-five to eighty percent of responses on there. So, we have added that to the manual. On this slide, we have added a proposed general survey during the very first piece of the review. So, we heard some feedback that the standard-by-standard is very helpful, that survey, but they would like, stakeholders would like a more global approach to providing feedback so that it's easier, an easier place for them to give feedback holistically on the standards. So, we are proposing adding a standard, a survey during that piece of the revision, review and revision. And then, the last line here is we have created focus group and interview questions, and we have just revised just a little bit to make it a little more open-ended with those questions. On the next slide, we have highlighted on page sixteen and clarified how the DRC, the Data Review Committee, will be selected. We create a blinded process, so we just want to make sure that it is very clear on how each content area will go through that process to ensure that that blind system is in place. On this one, we updated the DRC applications, again, on feedback from the governance group as well as lessons learned. For example, we added a question on having the applicant pick their top three grades or courses they would like to work with, so we know where they feel most comfortable within their work. We've clarified language around data analysis to really highlight that the content area team does not do that data analysis. We work with a group, whether it's OLR or a different group outside of our content area. And then, we have added the monthly State Board presentations within the manual and a template for that PowerPoint. We have more extended content standard language. This is around the revision phase, and so this just says that unless otherwise noted, the extended content team goes through the same process and steps. And then, again, similar to the DRC, we've added details on the standard writing team selections, the blinded processes as well. We just wanted to make sure that was very clear, and the steps and details were laid out. On this one, we updated the writers' application submerged of the DRC. We updated it in a very similar fashion. We also updated how the writers would be approved by leadership, and then we, another major change would be moving the advisory committee. Currently, we have, after draft one is released, we have an advisory group that gives feedback on those standards. And we find that, and from feedback, we find that it would be more helpful to move them during installation so that they can give feedback on support documents. What supports documents are needed? What do they need to look like? What should they contain? So that those teachers can give very direct, or coaches or admins can give very direct feedback on what those support documents should look like. Again, we have some survey updates, very similar to what we talked about earlier. This is just during a different part. This is during the revision part of the process. On this one, we gave clear, again, you're going to see repetitiveness here, we just had very clear directions on data analysis. We had it during review. We want to make sure it's there during revision. We also added a tentative note, subject to change, underneath the chart that talks about the timeline of when it will come to the Board. As you know, we've had some delays across the content areas during their review and revision, so we just want to make sure that in case there is a delay across the process, that's noted. More language around the extended content standards, and this talks about the steps that they will take in alignment unless otherwise noted during installation and the work that they will complete alongside our teams. And this is where we've placed the advisory group, so that during that very first year during installation, input, very strong input from the field is given on those support documents. And the very last one is, we have added a definition in the glossary around extended content standards to make sure that that is clear. And then, just a few notes there of some very, very minor changes that have been made across the manual.
Questions for Dr. Day? Yes, Dr.? Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Day. I, one of, going back, I don't have to go back, I recall something about seventy-five percent response rate across the state. Do, anywhere in the document are you addressing how we ensure valid representation, solid representation per region?
No, we do track that and provide it to the Board through our maps. We ensure that we make, we, when we track that, we make sure that we do have representative, but we can definitely add a note, or maybe within the template for the State Board, we can add a note within that template that that is provided.
Yeah, I think that's important because seventy-five percent could be one half of the state, and it would be good to have, you know what I'm saying? The balance is good. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Day. We have, I feel there should be a drum roll here. Our discussion item, first discussion item is SLA 3, Read to Achieve Formative Assessment Midyear Update. Dr. Brown. Did we see a smile on her face?
Ah, yes. Good morning, Vice Chair Duncan, Superintendent Truitt, members of the Board, and stakeholders and colleagues. So, it is my pleasure to, well, thank you, first of all, for taking the time to let me update you on what's happening across our state with our Read to Achieve, with our early literacy. But it is my honor also to report what's happening across the state. Great things are happening. I think she's pulling it up now. You're fine. So, on this next slide, I want to start, first of all, by congratulating, believe it or not, it feels like it was just yesterday, we started implementing and training professionals, educators across the state in Cohort 1, if you remember all of that. And so, these seven districts in Cohort 1 have already completed the full course, modules, professional development, the face-to-face or virtual sessions. And so, kudos to them because they are ahead of schedule, leading the way. That doesn't mean they're finished, they're just, are checking it off, we're just getting started, but they have that content knowledge to begin with their educators and their professionals in those districts. The other thing I'm proud to say about Cohort 1 is they had the extension until August of the next school year, just because there was a delay in our contract. But every single cohort, every senior district in Cohort 1, if they stay on schedule, will be completed by June. So, they really are committed to this, and I want to shout out our educators for making that happen. And we can say that, we can put it in law, but our practitioners are the ones making it happen. So, that's a, that's a huge celebration for North Carolina and the districts and what's happening there. So, we'll get started with the data. We, this is the mid-year amplified data report, and as we work through this, you'll see the key here. The national data will be a light green or dark green, and in North Carolina will be indicated in gray. The red will also be where we're looking at the decline in our at-risk or most intensive students. So, if you look at this first slide, and you're looking at here, the students that are on track from beginning the students that are on track from beginning of year to mid-year. The first bar, that light green, is 22, 23, beginning of year for the nation. The second bar is, was beginning of year to mid-year for the nation. Then the third bar you'll see is North Carolina. And the fourth bar there is North Carolina mid-year. So if you look at the gains that are happening at the nation in kindergarten, they grew 12% of their students who are on track. However, North Carolina in kindergarten has grown 26% from beginning of year to mid-year. Huge, huge shout-out to our kindergarten teachers. And then if you look at the next set of data, there is your nation, your national average or percentage gains from the first, the second bar, from beginning of year to mid-year is 1%. And our first graders in North Carolina grew 6%. Same thing for second grade. We have a 2% gain compared to 5%. And then third grade, you'll notice, is not growing as strong. There was no movement in the nation. However, we did make 1%, increase our students who were on track by 1%. Keeping in mind, when you think about Scarborough's rope and what's happening, our third-grade students were those students during COVID who missed all of kindergarten and part of first grade. So those foundational skills with word recognition, they are now crossing over to language comprehension, and it gets a little more difficult as you go. Doesn't mean we stop. We're going to continue to focus on what they need, but it also means we have some catch-up growth to do, not just annual growth. And so we're having those conversations about how do you balance implementing the core, but also making sure they are provided the intensive support that they need. So we're continuing to see gains there in a smaller way. The next slide is the data for your intensive interventions. The nation decreased by 11% with kindergarten. However, in North Carolina, there was a decrease of 26%. And we want to see these numbers go down because you want to see fewer students who need intensive support. First grade was an increase of 1% in the nation. However, North Carolina decreased those numbers by 3%. Same thing for second grade. There was a decrease of 3% of the nation and a decrease of 5% in North Carolina. And then third grade, while you see those, the increase is the same, you will see that we are still below the nation in the percentage of students who need an intervention or intensive intervention. So those are, we're still performing better than the nation. One of the things that we talked about at the beginning, when we talked about beginning of year, with the data, is that we were catching up. Now we have surpassed. And so that's a great, that's also a great celebration for North Carolina. So let's look at subgroups. Students who are on track, you will see here, with your white subgroup, 5% compared to 10%. Asian, 0% growth or gains compared to 3%. Black, 3% compared to 7% for North Carolina. Hispanic, 5% compared to 7%, but we have some work to do there. You'll see there's still, we're still below the nation, so we want to look at that subgroup specifically. And then American Indian, 2% compared to 8%. So even within our subgroups, below the averages, hidden within the averages, we're seeing gains. On the next slide, you'll see, once again, the decrease of students who are needing intensive support at each, at each subgroup, negative 3 compared to negative 7. First grade increased 1 with our Asian subgroup, but decreased for North Carolina by 2%. And you'll see the trends here continue. Much to celebrate compared to what's happening, or North Carolina compared to what's happening. So then, so let's look at these students when they were in kindergarten compared to first grade, mid-year to mid-year. We even pulled that data out, thinking, okay, how are we performing there? And you'll see on these, this data, the star indicates that group of students in kindergarten compared to the star and where they are in the second group of data. So kindergarten to first grade, you are seeing in North Carolina, there was a 7% increase for those students when you follow those children. Only 2% of the nation. When you look at the triangle, you tell them elementary, you have our students in first grade compared to where they are in second grade now, there's an increase of 9% compared to only 6% for those students. And that last subgroup with the heart, you're looking at second-grade students in North Carolina compared to where they are in grade 3 with a 4% increase, whereas the nation, there was 0% gains. So the final slide here for this particular piece is the decrease. And I will tell you, we're still moving in the right direction. These, these slides also, or this slide also follows the trends that you're seeing so far. And the next slide. If you'll remember, thinking back, we had about 28,000 less students who were below benchmark at the beginning of the year compared to 28,000 who were above, at or above benchmark at the beginning of the year. So where are we now? At mid-year, when you compare beginning of year to mid-year, we have 30,000% less, or 30, not percent, 30,000 less students who are below, needed benchmark as far as needing intensive support. We've decreased the number who need the intensive support. And we have about 40%, 40,000, I'm sorry, 40,000 students who are at or above benchmark compared to where they were at the beginning of the year. So when you're comparing beginning of year to mid-year, you are seeing, we are having, we are seeing that 30,000 students who have decreased their need for intensive support with 40,000 now at or above grade level or benchmark, not grade level necessarily. So I would like to say, I mean, I'm proud of our educators and what's happening. I know this is not easy work. I know this is not the only thing our educators do, but they have really, no matter which way we look at it, they are making strides, doing amazing things, and you should be proud as well. And we really appreciate you and your leadership as we are continuing to implement and move forward and support all students. We would love for those proficiencies to be higher, but we are just beginning, and we are, we have great things ahead. Thank you. Any questions?
That is very good information. Kudos to all those teachers out there, K3, working hard as we are speaking right now. So tell me, though, I just think, what is intensive intervention? Give me an example.
So it may be a group, and there's different, there's protocol that is established through our MTSS framework. And it may be that there is a group of one to five students who are behind at a specific skill or skill level, and they receive an additional amount of support with a lower ratio typically, with this focused intensive skill that they're focused on. So while they're still receiving core on grade-level material, they also are getting extra time with an individual in a smaller setting based on that skill to close some of those gaps so that they can catch up. So they're moving in both, right?
That's a good, a good metric. But at the same time, it's almost an oxymoron because you would want those students in reality to keep getting that help. But I guess this is the way the data are collected.
So I think there's a, there's a balance, because the one thing we want to make sure that we're doing is, and one thing I think about when I was implementing this, is making sure that as we're looking at our full amount of time, and we're trying to make sure those children are double and triple-dosed, they're, they're still receiving everything they need, just like every other child. But in reality, they may be learning at a slower rate, or they missed out on something during COVID, or whatever that may be, that we continue to make sure that they are still a priority. But even as they're growing and they're, and they're gaining those skills, they aren't necessarily not receiving anything, because you have a differentiated core that happens for all children, not necessarily just intensive supports.
Very good, thank you. Other questions for Dr. Ryan?
Come out in the chair quickly, it's time for someone to state that. This was like, this data was like, maybe a couple of months old?
Yes.
Okay. So we're beginning to count down.
Yes.
Beginning of the year, we have possibly eight weeks, somewhere in there. What about projections? Do we have any projections? How do we know?
I'll let Superintendent Truitt.
Great minds, Mr. Hall. So it was Tuesday this week that the Amplify Leadership Team came to North Carolina and met with us. And that was the first question I asked. I said, so this is amazing data because the last time we met with them to look at the beginning of year data, we saw that while we were growing faster than the rest of the nation, we had not surpassed the nation. Now, not only are we growing faster, but we have now surpassed the nation because all 50 states give this test. So we are comparing our students to millions of students. And so I said, if our K3 data looks like this, what will our third-grade EOG data look like, given that this is measuring foundational literacy skills and the EOG is measuring the actual application of those skills? And so we had a lengthy conversation about that. And given that, given the growth that we're seeing, we are anticipating that our third graders are going to do better than they have in the past. But we still have to contend with the fact that these third graders missed almost a year and a half of school when they were just entering school. And so we also have to contend with the fact that our third graders have been receiving 3Qing and whole language instruction, which doesn't work, longer than our kindergarten first and second graders. And so teachers are having to do correcting with those students. So overall, we are projecting that our students will do better, but we, we think that our second graders this year will do even better than the third graders this year. We're going to continue to see those staggered gains. Do I leave anything out?
No, that's great.
Thank you.
And I think it bears pointing out that we are just beginning this journey. And so we are, we are not yet fully, fully, correct through the change in every classroom in this state.
Correct.
So this is a limited look at those people who are perhaps among the cohorts, that early cohorts having a larger influence.
Absolutely. And I think, too, the reality of, and I'll always kind of advocate for this, making sure that we allow teachers the time to truly understand this and implement it, and then see that, that next layer of what it looks like in action. They are just learning that content, so giving them grace and space to then apply that for a little bit of time, rather than you've learned it, why aren't you fixing it? So that's, just making sure we balance that.
So I have to say that I've met several middle school teachers in the last couple of weeks who are asking for letters training. Our middle school teachers do not know what to do with students who come to them who cannot read. And so we, we will be at the department devising a plan to figure out how many middle school teachers could possibly participate in a middle school version of letters so that they can be prepared to help sixth graders when they, when they transition into middle school.
As soon as you've got something to share with us on that, that would be great.
Absolutely. Yes, I know the board has been, shares in my concern about that.
Yes. That's been a concern all along, and you can only do so much in the first couple of years. But it's definitely time to turn our attention to that.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments around the table? Just great news, Dr. Ryan. Dr. Oxendine and I did not get to see this data when we had our.
I know, I've been waiting. They didn't rest.
Been a suspense for many days. All right, thank you so much, Dr. Ryan. Congratulations on this great, great report. Finally, we have our, another, second discussion item is our annual report from the State Advisory Council on Indian Education, affectionately known as SACE. This is their annual report to us, and Dr. Locklear is, who is Chair of that council, is going to share the recommendations he shared.
Good morning, Vice Chair Duncan, State Board members, Superintendent Truitt, and all other stakeholders. On behalf of the State Advisory Council on Indian Education, we are pleased to present this vital work, the 2023 Annual SACE Report. The report comprehensively examines the issue and underscores the ongoing necessity for achieving educational equity for American Indian students. Here you see the vision and mission of SACE that guides the work that we do. Our 2023 report theme is elevating our voices to thrive in education. We acknowledge the disruptions in our lives that have increased trauma caused by the pandemic and other things that cause heavy hearts. And today is important to heal and elevate our voices in an equitable and intentional way to bring forth a sense of community that makes our world a better place. This provides a dynamic opportunity to advance educational equity within our districts and our schools. As educators respond to and transform pedagogy, we continue to highlight the achievement gaps that exist for American Indian students. This work aligns with the Public Education Equity Resolution Goal to eliminate opportunity gaps by 2025. It is important to note that three years of data have been provided for each assessment. However, the 2019, 2020 data for EOGs and EOCs are not available due to COVID-19. The report includes state-level findings by grade level for reading, math, and science. EOC findings by gender are included, and overall state-level findings for the ACT, ACT, the ACT, SAT, and AP. And we have also included suspension data. I would like for you guys to take a look at this table. This table indicates that there are still significant achievement disparities between American Indian students and their white counterparts in multiple areas. This highlights the need for targeted interventions that address the unique challenges faced by American Indian students and provide them with the necessary support to succeed academically. By failing to address these achievement gaps, we risk continuing the cycle of disadvantage that continue to have lasting effects on the lives of American Indian students and their communities. The graduation rate, I'm, I'm sorry. The graduation rate for American Indian students in the state continues to lag behind that of their white counterparts by almost five percentage points within the four-year cohort. During the 2021 school year, there was a concerning increase in the dropout rates across all subgroups, with American Indian population experiencing a notable rise of almost two percentage points. The remaining subgroups also displayed a moderate increase in dropout rates. American Indian students had a dropout rate of 3.4%, surpassing the rates of their white peers, black peers, and Hispanic peers. It is worth mentioning that the dropout rate for American Indian students remains above the state average. Moreover, the data indicates that male students from all racial backgrounds have a higher tendency to drop out compared to their female counterparts. There was an overall increase in the number of students demonstrating proficiency on EOG reading assessments, including American Indian students during the 2021, 2022 school year. Notably, American Indian students showed a remarkable increase of five percentage points since the previous academic year. Despite that positive trend, the data reveals that American Indian students still fall behind their white peers as it relates to reading proficiency. The average EOG math proficiency scores for American Indian students, along with other subgroups, witnessed a notable improvement across different grade levels during the 2021 school year. Particularly, American Indian students showed a remarkable surge of 12.7 percentage points since the previous academic year. However, the 2021, 2022 EOG math data for grades 3 through 5 highlights a decline in overall proficiency rates, while grades 3 through, while grades 6 through 8 displayed an increase. Again, it's noteworthy to show that the data indicates that American Indian students continues to lag behind their white counterparts in math proficiency, which is a cause for concern. The 2021, 2022 academic year witnessed an overall improvement in EOG science proficiency rates for both fifth and eighth-grade students. Nevertheless, the data reveals American Indian students scored below the state average and their white peers in terms of proficiency. and their white peers in terms of proficiency rates in both grades. In the 2021, 2022 academic year, American Indian students exhibited an increase in overall proficiency rates in Math I and Biology, but a slight decrease in English. However, American Indian students scored significantly lower than their white peers in Math I with a proficiency rate of 44%, which is 20% lower than their white counterparts. In Biology, American Indian students achieved a proficiency rate of 39%, below the state average of 52% and considerably lower than their white counterparts who performed at a rate of 66%. The trend of lower proficiency rates for American Indian students is also reflected in English, too. Additionally, female students in all racial groups outperformed male students. But American Indian female students still scored 20% points lower than their white female peers, while male students scored 21% below their white male counterparts. In the 2021 academic year, the number of short-term suspensions reported statewide increase. Of particular concern is the disproportionate rate of short-term suspensions for certain racial, ethnic groups. For instance, American Indian students were suspended at a rate of 243 per 1,000 students compared to their white counterparts at a rate of only 83 per 1,000 students. This highlights the need for further examination and action to address potential disparities in discipline practices. Based on the presented data, SACE strongly supports the 2021 SACE recommendations outlined in the appendices. Of particular importance is Appendix A. Additionally, SACE wishes to highlight Appendix B, which contains the Circles of Reflection completed by Dr. Priscilla Mayner and her team. In her Circles of Reflection, she interviewed DPI senior leadership, SACE members, educators, and tribal leadership. The report focuses on three priorities: effective teachers and leaders, native culture and language, and tribal consultation and sovereignty. Appendix J brings attention to the issue of American Indian mascots, revealing that 34 schools in North Carolina still use an American Indian-themed mascot or logo. SACE believes that this imagery can have a negative impact on the self-image of American Indian students and can be harmful to the perception of American Indian students by non-native students and staff. This recommendation, again, aligns with your equity resolution passed by the State Board. Finally, in Appendix K, SACE has provided guidance for the elimination of mascots in North Carolina public schools as a crucial step for moving forward. Based on the quantitative data presented in this report, we have arrived at our 2023 recommendation. Priority three from the pilot program, as identified in the Circles of Recommendation that involved DPI senior leadership, again, focused on tribal consultation and sovereignty. This recommendation underscores the importance of engaging and collaborating with tribal communities to ensure that their voices and perspectives are incorporated within educational policies and practices. By prioritizing tribal consultation and sovereignty, we can work towards creating a more inclusive and equitable education system for our students, particularly those from American Indian communities. And I would state that one of the schools in North Carolina receives the highest Title VI funds in the United States of America. As part of the North Carolina State Board of Education Vision for Opportunity Equity, support all efforts to secure and establish a department-level position dedicated to American Indian education services and the enactment of previous SACE recommendations. This work requires and includes consultation with and coordination across all entities whose missions seek to improve educational opportunities for American Indian students. This recommendation is consistent with requirements that is secured by the Every Student Succeeds Act, which requires collaboration and consultation with districts, tribes, higher education, critical state organizations, and the Department of Public Instruction. Additionally, we bring attention to our 2022 recommendation, which also called for this state-level position, as well as our 2021 state report recommendations, which remain relevant to our tribal communities. The recommendations are, again, aligned to the State Board of Education Equity Resolution Goals. It is important to note that the approved 2022 recommendation, which emphasized the need for state-level position to address the educational disparities based by tribal communities. The 2021 SACE report recommendations, which continue to be relevant, aim to address these disparities. Despite the annual provision of this report, these disparities persist, indicating a need for change. We must break this cycle. Again, the recommendations are aligned to the Equity Resolution Goal. This year, SACE hosted an education summit in Whispering Pines, which brought together experts and thought leaders to highlight successful programs, engage in meaningful conversations, and build community. So we are doing our part as well. We spotlighted Cumberland County Schools Office of Education, the tribal programming that supports American Indian education, the Waukama Suon STEAM Project, and of course, this SACE report that North Carolina produces each and every year. We also have breakout sessions that included the voices of UNCP students as it relates to promoting equity. We discussed tribal consultation and collaboration, strengthening Title VI programming. Again, one of the North Carolina, one of the districts right here in North Carolina receives the highest Title VI funds in the United States of America. So that position's very, this position's very important. And then we also talked about the American Indian mascots. During our SACE meeting, Superintendent Catherine Troy delivered special remarks and extended her unwavering support for our ongoing efforts. And we were appreciative of her attendance and the support of our mission to uplift American Indian voices and students in the great state of North Carolina. We also appreciate your support for our state-level position and reassuring us of the significance of moving forward. DPI previously held a Director of American Indian Position, which has been a part of senior leadership. The Director of American Indian Position was a critical role in ensuring that the needs and interests of American Indian students were adequately represented and advocated for within the education system right here at DPI. So during the SACE summit, three distinguished honorees, Ms. Betty Magnum, Dr. Olivia Oxendine, and Dr. Priscilla Mayner, emphasized the positive impact that this position had on the lives and outcomes of American Indian students. Their powerful messages highlighted the significance of having a dedicated voice and representation for students. The reinstatement, the reinstatement of this position would not only provide much-needed advocacy and support for American Indian students, but also serve as a powerful symbol of the state's, of the state's commitment to equity in education. SACE is fully committed to supporting the reinstatement of the Director of American Indian Education Position, recognizing its crucial role in advancing equity and ensuring that American Indian students receive the supportive resources that they need to succeed. Moreover, SACE expresses its deep gratitude and admiration for the commitment, service, and leadership of pioneering individuals like Ms. Betty Magnum, Dr. Olivia Oxendine, and Dr. Priscilla Mayner, whose tireless efforts have paved the way for a more just and equitable education system in North Carolina. The keynote address was given by the Director of the Office of Indian Education at the United States Department of Education, Julian Gareo. His message was truly inspiring for the participants in attendance. His message of hope and empowerment for American Indian students was truly moving, and his presence was an honor to behold. As we move forward, let us remember to stay encouraged, to draw inspiration from those who came before us, and to always elevate our voices for the betterment of future generations. We would like to express our deepest appreciation to the North Carolina State Board of Education, the North Carolina Commission of Indian Affairs, DPI staff, to include Dr. Briggs and Ms. Richardson, the National Comprehensive Center, and all SACE members. We recognize the tremendous effort and dedication of each team member whose unwavering commitment has made it possible to produce this annual report year after year. We would also like to extend a special thank you to Dr. Susan Silver, who serves as our DPI liaison to SACE. Her expertise and tireless dedication to our team has been invaluable to ensuring success of our mission. Her leadership and passion have inspired us all to strive for excellence. Together, these teams have made an enormous difference in the lives of American Indian students in North Carolina, and we are grateful for their continued support and partnership. In closure, we also pay homage to the pioneering members of SACE who have laid the foundation for our mission. SACE remains steadfast in its commitment to elevating the voices of American Indian students and ensuring their success in education. At this time, I welcome any questions or discussion.
Questions for Dr. Loughler?
I had not realized till you highlighted that North Carolina receives more Title VI funds than any other state. That's interesting and sort of begs the question, how do we go about our distribution of Title VI funds without, within the state? How do we maximize the benefits for our American Indian students?
Well, that is based on the number of Indian students enrolled in each district. So the Robinson County has the highest number of American Indian students in their district. So they receive the highest Title VI funds in the United States of America. In the United States of America. So great things should be happening in Robinson County.
If I could, I'm sorry.
I'll go ahead.
If I could just add a point or two to that. The Indian Education Act goes back to 1973, and it, the money never flowed out of Congress. The money has never flowed through an SEA, a state education agency. The money was, the funds, by intention by the Congress at that time, felt that the money, as a matter of fact, one of the leaders in that movement that brought about the Indian Education Act, Helen Scherbek, is a Lombi Indian, passed away several years ago. So her fingerprints are all over that legislation to this day. So DPI or any state where you have districts receiving those dollars, DPI is kind of out of the picture. The money flows directly to, Robinson County is the largest recipient in the country. And it's up to the local Board of Education and the Superintendent. And a very vital, must be, this is in the legislation, you must have a strong parent advisory committee. So they're very instrumental in that triangulation of decision makers, how those funds are used.
So I wanted to let the board know, if it doesn't already, that Representative Jared Lowery from Robinson County has filed a bill asking for a permanent position for American Indian education work to be housed at the Department of Public Instruction.
That's great movement. And we are advocate, we are, you know, fully.
Yes, we appreciate all support for the advocacy of that position because that position would allow accountability for those Title VI funds that we can't, that can't always, we can't always make those connections, school board members or others.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And looking at the data that you presented in the, in the, I guess, I'm thinking, with the collaboration with the tribal leaders, are there specific strategies that's being developed that is required to be implemented in order to impact some of those DARE figures that I was looking at a minute ago? Should that not be, I mean, happen with?
There are instructional strategies and best practices that can be implemented in the classroom. So absolutely, there are best practices in culturally responsive teaching that can incur in the classroom that can assist with closing those achievement gaps.
So if I went to Robinson County, I would see some of these practices in place? I'm just asking, not even.
Well, the data is included in the report.
Yeah.
So. Now, the data's included in the report, so those instructional practices are not being implemented in Robinson County either. And again, that comes from leadership, and that comes from advocacy, and that's why this position is so important. This position is important because we need someone to hold leadership accountable to make these culturally responsive practices become apparent in these classrooms.
These are all kids, too.
Mm-hmm. And our Title VI, and our Title VI coordinators should have a voice. They should have a seat at a table, and they should have a voice when curricular decisions is being made. And in all districts, Title VI coordinators do not have a seat at a table, much less a voice. And it's very important. And so this position could advocate for our Title VI coordinators to have a voice and that tribal consultation and meaningful collaboration to truly happen and unfold. It should be happening because they're receiving those Title VI dollars, right? We don't want to just be compliant. We really want to be intentional, and we want to be making an impact, right? We don't want to just be compliant. We should be want, I want to make a difference in the lives of the children. Now, I stand before every day at UNCP, and I would hope that everybody else wants to make a difference as well. That's the mission, that's the true mission and heart of being a teacher, to make a difference. And you do that with your data. If you're not using your data to inform your instruction, then you're not making the true difference. And so no, there's not a position that's holding anyone in North Carolina accountable for Title VI funds and the implementation thereof as it relates to instructional practices, best practices, culturally responsive teaching and learning, whatever. SACE has developed modules in which teachers can earn CEU. So we do have a module that teachers can go in, complete those modules, and earn CEU. So we are certainly trying to support the teachers throughout the state of North Carolina. But again, we can't hold leadership. I'm just an advisory person, right? I can't hold leadership accountable, which again, makes this position so very important.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you for that great explanation of what that means looks like. That's why.
Go ahead. Go ahead. Well, I just, I hope and am advocating for this position to come to the department. But I also have to wonder with my fellow board members, what, from a pragmatic or practical standpoint, practical standpoint, would that position be able to direct or help direct federal funds that belong to the local level? And that's the main question.
And if we were so fortunate as to receive that position, that would be...
Correct. And how much money is it, Dr. Locklear? The federal, the Title VI total in Robinson County, what was the total?
Robinson receives, it's like 2.2, 2.3 million dollars.
There's probably close to 500, probably close to 5 million. And I'm not counting what the funds that go to the Eastern Band Cherokee, the federal tribe. Probably, what is it, maybe 10 LEAs receive, maybe more than that receive this fund. So, close to 5 million. Comes out of Washington, flows to the LEAs. But you know, that's a good point, that's a very good point. This position, should it make it through all the committees over in the General Assembly, and turn out to be a position here in the building, is going to, this person's going to have a huge job, because we can't, the agency nor the State Board of Education, we have no jurisdiction over those dollars. But what we do have jurisdiction over, if this position becomes a reality, is making sure that this individual has to walk on water, human being, and is going to have to work across these LEAs that have, that receive the dollars, so that we can leverage good instruction to diminish these gaps. We had, this board, I've been, you know, we've been together for a while, and we see this report every year, we see these gaps every year. I'm quite frustrated and tired of seeing them, and I bet some of you may feel similar to the way Olivia Oxenine does. So, we have, SASE has a lot of hope in this position. We really do. And I know you do also, Superintendent, you understand. I'm getting signals to be quiet. Well, not quite, just... But I do, I do have, I've got this word in need to say this, I'm going to get it off my chest. I want to be a member of this state board, this particular state board, each one of you, I'm staring at you now, that can go on record saying, we have, as the State Board of Education of North Carolina, with over 21,000 Indian students in North Carolina, we have been, we have led the way to end mascots in the state. Now, I've been back and forth on mascots. I have said, five years ago, okay, will that close reading the achievement gap? Will it make, help students become readers? Will it do, make mathematicians out of it? On and on and on. And I've come down to say, probably not, maybe, but maybe not. But you know what? Somewhat. It's a matter of this board listening to the wishes of American Indian people across the state, and they're designed to end mascots. No other ethnic group that we can list at this point in time would be subject to mascot. But American Indians. It's time to end it, folks. And I rest my case.
Ms. White, you want to close this out, please?
I'm closing out the conversation. Had it not been for your report, I would not have known about the recognition that was offered to my colleague, Dr. Olivia Oxenine, because she's humble, she would have never let us know that. And so, would you join me in a round of applause for her...
Thank you for your advocacy.
Yes.
We hear you. Thank you so much, Dr. Locklear, for that, for that great report, and we will, we hear you.
Thank you so much.
Finally, one quick consent item. Last month, we heard the recommendations for high school accreditation, and tomorrow we will be voting on approving the accreditation for seven schools in Buncombe County, Three Correttes, and one in Sherman's and Nancy each. And that concludes my committee report, and my apologies for going so far over. But we had lots of, lots of discussions, and we never know how that's going to get. So, thank you, everyone, for being, for your involvement.
Thank you, Ms. Camnitz. We will now move to our Education, Innovation, and Charter Schools discussion led by Amy White.
Good morning, Vice Chair Duncan and colleagues. Jill Camnitz and I have the pleasure of working together to lead the committee's work for the Education, Innovation, and Charter School Committee. We have a robust agenda, and so, I'm going to just say before we start this agenda that we're the only things between you and lunch. And so, with that, we've got three action items, a couple of discussion items, and let's, let me introduce as a precursor that Ashley Becaro, who is normally the Department of Public Instruction staff person, she is the head of the Office of Charter Schools, is not with us today, but we have Jenna Cook with us that will be representing OCS. And when we are talking about particular charters and the renewals, Cheryl Turner is also with us, representing the, she's the chair of the Charter School Advisory Board. And then, I will turn it over to Dr. Andrew Smith to talk us through. No?
In the interest of time, we do all the introductions. Good, you have it.
Got it. Welcome, Jenna.
Thank you.
Okay. Our first item is Raleigh Oak Charter School, and with the, it's before us with the request to relocate. Raleigh Oak Charter currently is in Wake County. They are out of space, and they have identified a property that is outside of the five mile automatically approved relocation radius, and Charter School law states that if it's outside of the five mile radius, they have to come before C-SAB and then before the State Board to request that relocation. The school is approximately about 8.92 miles from the current campus in Raleigh, and they are hoping that by moving the campus, not only would it afford it more space, but it also would allow them to serve more of the population that they intended to serve in the original grant, excuse me, charter school application. Okay. Jenna, let me turn that over to you.
Yep. So, like Ms. White said, Raleigh Oak is requesting to move. This is also, this will be a permanent location in between that time. They are moving to a temporary location that has been approved through our office, because it is within that five mile radius, so they have a temporary location, and then this permanent location would be for 2025. And the school has provided all of the plans and things for us to bring it to you. So, no changes since the last time. They did provide a letter of intent that was requested in the last meeting, so that was sent.
Okay. Questions about Raleigh Oak Charter's request to relocate? Vice Chair Duncan?
It's not so much a question, it's just a comment that Raleigh Charter Oaks is also up for renewal, this school, and it's a three-year renewal process, and it's, it's obviously not being for five or seven, and so it's only for three. I asked last time in the office, was kind enough to get to me a copy, what the construction proposal would look like for the new school, we'll only go into, as you just said, two years. There are going to be some pretty significant financial commitments that will be brought up, having reviewed that contract. So, I guess I just want to make sure the school is comfortable with all that it's taking on right now. It's a lot. There's a, first question about getting the renewal, and once in place, then it would only be in the new facility for one year before another, already been a renewal process, actually, in the last year. So, a very tight time schedule for this new school, so I just have some concerns about that, not about, I will vote for it, but I have some concerns, because I think the timing is less than ideal, and the potential financial on this could be difficult to navigate.
I'll offer you a word of encouragement, and so, the board's responsibility in this is to approve whether or not they can relocate. And then, it would be up to the responsibility and the strong fiscal decision-making of the nonprofit board for that charter, for them to decide whether or not they actually do make the investment in the property. So, our only role here really is to decide whether or not we would allow them to relocate. They could make the decision, financial numbers, interest rates, cost of construction could impact their decision-making, but that's not our job. Our job is just to decide whether or not they...
I agree with you.
Yeah.
But my concern is it's also up for renewal at the same time, in three years, and so those coalescing together caused me the concern. So, I appreciate that better clarification from you.
Yes, sir. Any other questions about Raleigh Oak Charter? Okay, great. EICS II are the charter school expansion requests for 2023. General Statute 115(c)(218.7) says that enrollment growth in a charter that's greater than 30% has to come before the Charter School Advisory Board and before the State Board of Education for approval. So, the State Board of Education may approve additional enrollment growth of greater than 30% when these things are already in place. The additional actual enrollment of the charter school is within 10% of its maximum authorized enrollment. The charter school has commitments to 90% of the requested maximum growth. The charter school is not currently identified as low performing. The charter school meets generally accepted standards of fiscal management, and the charter school is, at the time of the request, at the time of the request, for the enrollment increased substantially in compliance with state law, federal law, charter school owned by laws, and provisions set forth in the charter school granted by the State Board. So, we've got a couple before us today. We've got Clover Garden and Unity Classical, both of which are requesting an enrollment increase. Clover Garden has, it's only an additional 89 students. Unity Classical is an additional 52 students. So, those are before us for approval. And then, the expansion request for another school, Asheville Peak Academy is requesting an additional two grade levels, fourth and fifth. They were struggling to accommodate the number of students intended, and so they felt like by adding both fourth and fifth grade at the same time, they would be able to fall within the guidelines. So, that's a brief overview. I'm going to turn it back over to Jenna so that she can provide the additional data points that she might need.
Sure. Well, I think you covered most of it. There are no changes from last month, again, relatively small from historical requests for additions to enrollment. I will just also add for Asheville Peak, they are a small school, and one of the primary things for them was to consider families that have students in that K-5 realm, and the ability to be able to offer a K-5 program to families that have students in multiple grade levels, so they feel like this will help with recruitment as well.
Okay. Questions from anyone about the charter school expansion requests?
I just have a quick question.
Superintendent Truitt?
So, I just want to make, I just want to make sure I understand that the three requests being made, the three institutions making these requests are all fulfill the statutory requirements to be able to...
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Yes. Okay. All right. Not seeing any more hands raised. Let's move on to perhaps the most, the trickiest of the discussions today. So, EICS III are the 2023 charter school renewals. Board members, last month, I explained in detail that the charter school renewal process is a very intensive, two-year process by which the school must collect data and information to go through that process. There's lots of paperwork, sometimes there are site visits, and all of that information funnels to the charter school advisory board for their review. The charter school advisory board this year made the decision that any school who did not in compliance and alliance, excuse me, compliance and alignment with North Carolina Charter School Law 115(c)(218.6), any school who did not automatically qualify for a 10-year renewal. They contacted all of those schools and invited them to appear before C-SAB for an interview. And those schools, during that interview process, had the opportunity, not once, but sometimes, sometimes twice, to come back. They had the chance to answer any question by the charter school advisory board. They had the chance to provide data. They had the chance to answer questions and alleviate or put forth information to the charter school advisory board that would alleviate any concern that, during that time period. And so, it's with that discussion with those schools that the charter school advisory board made those recommendations to us. Last month, we had a slate of 38 schools. I need to read a statement regarding three of the schools that appeared on the agenda last month, who will not be before us this month for consideration. So, if you'll allow me to read this into the, into my remarks. So, at our February meeting, the charter school, excuse me, at its February meeting, the charter school advisory board voted to recommend to the State Board of Education that the charters of Langtree Charter Academy, Westlake Preparatory Academy, and Cabarrus Charter Academy be renewed for 10 years, seven years, and three years respectively. So, to clarify, Langtree was recommended for 10, Westlake was recommended for seven, and Cabarrus was recommended for three. These recommendations were presented to us for information at our March the 2nd meeting, and we were initially scheduled for the final vote today, I'm, excuse me, tomorrow. All three of these schools still have outstanding issues regarding compliance with federal special education laws. They have been removed for the State Board's agenda for this month, and will be brought back to the charter school advisory board at the charter school advisory board's April 11th meeting for consideration of whether to amend its recommendation to us in light of these ongoing legal compliance issues. And then, they will come back to the State Board for final renewal, those three schools will come back to us for final renewal at our meeting on May the 4th. So, in summary, three schools are not up for consideration today. They are Langtree, Westlake Prep, and Cabarrus Charter Academy. Okay. Bear with me one more time. So, let's, we like to divide this so I can give you ample time to ask questions. Let me read the schools that are before us who automatically received a 10-year recommendation. Those 10, those schools are Tiller School, Willow Oak Montessori, Pinnacle Classical, North Carolina Leadership Charter Academy, Falls Lake Academy, Oxford Prep, Summerfield Charter, Queens Grant Community, Island Montessori, The Expedition School, U.A.R.E. Charter, Southeastern Academy, and Longleaf School of the Arts. All of those schools automatically qualified for a 10-year renewal this year. Does anyone have a question about those 10 schools? Vice Chair Duncan?
I don't have a question so much as a comment. I'm hard-pressed to vote for U.A.R.E. having a 10-year renewal when it's not net growth each of the last three years. The district being used as Ashboro, although the school's primarily located in Randolph County, I did get the data for Randolph County. It minimally qualifies in terms of comparison with Randolph County. I just, I wonder why a recommendation of a renewal, I'm not advocating not to renew, but a renewal of some lesser number of years would not be well advised, since it's fallen into low-performing school status during this timeframe. It just seems as if that would, a lesser period of time would give the school a better opportunity to get itself to a better place. So, I understand by law, it can come up automatically, but I also understand it's a very difficult vote to ask members to make.
What school was that?
U.A.R.E.
U.A.R.E. So, Ms. Turner or Ms. Cook, do you have a reply to that? So Ms. Turner or, or Ms. Cook, do you, do you have a reply to that or any?
Sure.
Information you want to hear?
Thank you. I appreciate your concern. We had the same concerns and it was brought up. However, according to legal, they get a ten-year and we didn't get to vote on that. It was legally, they get a ten-year.
I think one thing that we noted was in the, the statute doesn't make mention of low performing status. The only academic requirement is of that comparability to the LEA. And so while it was a topic of conversation, the, the statute only makes mention academically of that comparability.
Any other comments? Okay. Let's move then to the four schools that are before us for a seven-year renewal. Those four are Ascend Leadership Academy, Bonnie Cone Classical Academy, East Voyager Academy of Charlotte, and Jackson Day School. Are there any questions about the four schools recommended for a seven-year renewal? Vice Chair Duncan?
I'd appreciate with respect to Jackson Day and Bonnie Cone, exactly how they have met the statutory requirements. Because as I looked at the data, it was provided on Jackson Day, it has not met growth. It's not been, not met comparability two of the last three years. Bonnie Cone's not met growth, has not met academic comparability for one of the, has met it only one of the years. Has also had some compliance issues. So I guess the question is to me, if there's a strong feeling, it'd be helpful to get the board's insight on this. If there's a strong feeling of renewal, why would it be seven years? Because it's not clear to me how it met the standard for seven-year renewal.
Sure. Bonnie Cone presented, so with the data that we presented, we only presented seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen, and then the twenty-one, twenty-two. Bonnie Cone did bring us their own internal data to show that they did meet comparability to CMS in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, although that wasn't our data to share. They did share that data of their, to show that that would meet two years of comparability. Although that wasn't, the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one wasn't considered, I guess, to be for accountability purposes. They were able to show that comparability unofficially. And so, and then Jackson Day School also had a similar, we, the CSAB felt that all of the seven-year schools kind of had similar data and were trying to act consistently when, for when voting and moving a school from a five-year to a seven-year from their original placements. And so that's where Jackson Day School also fell into having pretty comparable data on that unofficial side.
Okay. Again, the, the, may I hate to use the word COVID, but unfortunately, not only are the charter schools, but every charter, every school across our state, there's a vacuum. Fortunately, because charter schools sometimes had the flexibility to stay in operation and, and, and manage data a little bit differently, they were able to provide some background that would not normally be accessible to us.
Well, can I say that data is not out for official usage, as I understand it in this way. So I guess my point had been in raising from the outset was it is really a question, perhaps Ms. Turner can help, was a less than seven-year renewal considered in light of these issues? Which would take into account COVID and give plenty of time for the school to, to be back to hopefully normal operations as well. A lot of our schools get back to normal operations.
We did consider five-year renewals for, I think, two of the schools. Ultimately, given the data, given the trajectory, we felt like they qual- that they would have qualified for a seven had they had acts, had that data been official. Even though we, but we had the data, it just wasn't official data.
May I add, please, that that, to your point, that the data is only not official as per federal guidelines. I mean, it is real data.
And, and, well, and the idea of hold harmless to every other school that was a- across our state should also apply here.
I think Bonnie Cone also presented some pretty compelling evidence in, given that they opened the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year and still were able to maintain that high academic performance, comparability to CMS. And also, you know, even with, opening a school year is a challenge in itself and then opening in the same year that you have to shut it down. They presented some pretty compelling evidence for that.
Okay. We have lots of schools before us for a three-year charter renewal. Going to remind my colleagues that a three-year charter renewal is a flashing yellow light. And if it had sirens, there would be a siren with, with, with the flashing yellow light. Can I explain to you the work that goes into a school's preparation for renewal? It's two years. That means only one year, and then they're right back in the renewal process. This is the get-it-together people? Or, or, or you're, or you're, you're not going to have a charter. The schools that are before us for consideration today are Paul R. Brown Leadership, Thomas Academy, Davidson Charter Academy, the Institute for Developing Young Leaders, the Experiential School of Greensboro, Aristotle Prep Academy, Veritas Community School, Moore Montessori, Rocky Mount Prep, Classical Charter Schools of Wilmington, Monroe Charter Academy, Apprentice Academy of North Carolina, Carolina Charter Academy, and Raleigh Oak Charter School. I'll open the floor for questions about the three-year, the schools before us for three-year renewal.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Keenan.
I, I do have some reservations about some of the schools that you have mentioned. But I guess my statement ties into a school that on the non, non-renewal. So we get into it, but to make it flow the way I need it to flow, I need also mentioning the school that we been recommended not to renew. Can I do it that way?
Sure.
Okay. Now, this is close to lunchtime, but I'm going to take my time to sort of explain what I'm trying to explain.
Yes, sir.
All right. And hopefully I can do it quickly. But I want to talk a little bit about the one that we recommend not renew. Then I have to get to the others to talk about equity and balance and how you do that when you didn't do that. So that's what I'm going. So the school that I want to talk about is Zeca, which is in my school district, which is in my district. And of course, I called you the other day and told you that they have called me in. They have called me for a while and something in the spirit, they go. So I called him on the phone and I said, I'm going to meet the, meet the people, the families, the children, administrators. And I'm with us six o'clock yesterday, was at the ten o'clock last night. But the point is, this, in my opinion, that non-renewal is a good example of why growth should be more important. If there's any school, again, this is my opinion, that deserves big example of why the model has to be changed is this school. And why I say that. I already read the, the data and I read about all these other schools that I'm going to talk about in a minute, not all of them, but two or three of them. And so I went there and I, I knew the demographics before I went. And I knew the kind of, the people that I would see, the children I would see. And when I got there, probably a room full of maybe fifty persons. Remember, there was a hundred students in the school. But I guarantee you, and remember, this is a late notice. I told them at three o'clock that I could come, maybe twelve o'clock I would be there. So in three hours, they had got all these families in a room, all the administrators there, all the teachers were there. And so the first thing I did, I allowed the parents to get it out. What do you want me to know about who you are, your children? One thing that, again, I'm going to make it short, but I just want to spill out what I got in, if you understand what I'm saying. And the person that I met, the children I met are the children who, no doubt in my mind, if they're in a public school, they won't, they, they won't laugh. I know who will laugh and who will not, because I've lived that life. I'm around people like that. Those are children need the special attention that they're getting from this school. So, well, so the grades look bad, but there's more to our children than a grade. These children don't have parents. These children don't have fathers. They don't have, they live in foster homes, but they've got grandmama. Parents don't have a job. Some of them don't have parents at all. But one thing that stood out about the data, ninety percent attendance rate. So even though they may not make A's and B's, they are somewhere, you know, they're safe in learning. And I looked at the, the history, yeah, they have F, 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 twenty thirteen. I read the minutes from the, the advisory board. And then also looked at other schools. I'm going to name one, for example. I looked at the one you recommended, Paul Brown Leadership. F's identical to the school that I'm talking about. Well, they say, oh, fine, we passed them. But I read it thoroughly. In the same leadership information, and you know, the, the advisory board asked, well, what you going to do different? What can you explain to us that you doing that we are convinced that you can deserve a three-year? And I read the same thing that they put in, in the notes about Brunton. It's very similar. So it's hard to explain to those folks that I talked to last night, how is someone who got the same grade, not doing well, hadn't met? Brown was F, 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 not met, met, not met. The school I'm talking about did have two mets. They don't only did that was after the COVID, which we know affects particular kids we're talking about. The kids in that school definitely, all of them have social emotional problems. And we also know those are the ones that we need that one-on-one. A hundred students in the whole school, and that's where they get it. So what I'm asking is, how do, how do we, or how do I go back to these folks that I talked to last night and say, well, well, even though we got the same, and they went in front of them, they told me about the meetings, how they, how they wanted to say more, but everything has time limit. I explained to them that they just didn't have time to, to, they had a limit. My point is, I, I'm talking about equity point of view. We are educated, we understand that, but some folks back home don't understand what, what we understand. So that's when the question become in people's mind of justice, or fair. I can explain to you, but when you go to the folks that I'm talking about, to them, that's not justice. And those are the one a lot of time who are looking for justice. And we are here to be fair. So I'm asking us to look more in detail. And then you go, you know, we said, well, compare it to the, the LEA. I did that. The reading was, I checked on Low County. A good example, and I'm going to finish in a minute. Reading was thirty percent non-proficient, ten percent level three. We know what level three is. It's all on the border. Need help still. Science, thirty percent non-proficient, ten percent level three. Math, fifty percent non-proficient, thirty percent level three. So what I'm saying is, even those schools, the district itself is struggling somewhat. And the two schools that funnel into, that's comparable elementary-wise in, for surrounding Zeca is Northwood Park and Clyde Elementary. And of course, they are D. And I, I, I'm, I'm trying to understand how we got to find a balance of what a kid's made up of. And I guarantee you, if, if this rule is closed, I, I, I see hope. I see hope that's over. And I'm an optimistic person. I got enough sense to know what I'm dealing with. I understand those kids need that touch every day. Those kids need somebody to hug when they come through the door. And this is what the school is doing. And they, literally, I'm going to get a couple anecdotes, I'm finished. I heard stories where public schools say, hey, we can't do nothing with you, but so we'll let you go over to the other school. And so when they come to the school, it's a whole different mindset. Their kids, they have, they graduated, I think, over fifty, into the, maybe fifty in the last ten years to high school. They said maybe only, of the eighth graders, they said maybe fifty, only four of them didn't finish the school, high school. A lot of them come there, have no hope, like don't even think about college. Parents there last night talking about, hey, my kid had college mindset because of this school. So I'm trying to give you the feel that I felt. And it's very hard to read a piece of paper and say, well, that, that school didn't do good. But until you get in the midst of it, you can't feel it. And even one of the advisory board members said that. He said, until I went down there, he said, one comment, I can't remember who talked, he said, if I hadn't been down there, I would vote where you voted. But by me going out there touching those folks, there's something good happening. It ain't perfect.
I see.
And I look at other schools, low performance. In, in, in best, I guess, D, 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 X, E, met, met. A lot of low performing, but where do you, how do you really differentiate which one is, which one low performing is the best? And that, we don't want to know the performance, but that's what we're talking about. I may have talked too long, but.
You did not, and I, I'll just go and say, I've, I've served on this board with you for seven years. And I don't think I've ever heard you speak as passionately about something that you care about as you have just now. So I can absolutely see right into the window of your heart and your care for the students that are being served by that school. Thank you. Superintendent Truitt?
So Reggie, you, you have hit on something that, that I have the privilege of experiencing all the time, which is that I get to go into schools and see them for more than what they look like on paper. And what you're describing is exactly why, rather than just fight for a change in the formula for how we define a, a school with a letter grade, rather than just fight for fifty-fifty growth and achievement or twenty-eighty achievement and growth, which is what a lot of people have advocated for, we are opting for a multiple measures approach to defining school quality. And so the board does have to struggle when it's deciding on these renewals and closures. If it is just looking at the, the academic achievement, we can't in one breath say, well, we all acknowledge that the school performance grade formula is flawed, but then use that to close schools. So if we're looking at other issues like non-compliance with EC, which is very serious, or financial non-compliance, or misappropriation of funds, to me, that is a separate issue than solely using the school performance grade formula of eighty-twenty, which everyone agrees is the wrong way to look at school, at, at, at school quality. But to then use that to close down charter schools seems very misguided to me.
Can I ask, last one last thing? I'm going to shut up, please.
Your role, your role on the board is to ask questions.
So in essence, what I'm asking, would this board to consider? And, and maybe some of the advisory board members are listening to me. But I think if any school deserves a chance for the three-year period, in my heart, I feel this is a school that I would love to stick a chance on. That's all I got to say.
Mr. Hall?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My esteemed colleague here, I will hire him in a day to represent me in the court of law. I don't care what I did, to get him. I would love, I would love to have him stand before the, the court. And this is the court here. That's, you know, in, in all essence. I had real concerns. I had it last, last board meeting. And the gentleman I think is still is in the, in the audience today, when I spoke about Paul R. Brown and the F, F, F rating over the last three years, which if I'm correct, it says that renewal is based upon other things. Three, the three preceding years would have to have met, each of them, and they did. And I was sitting here, and I was ready today, Madam Chair, I thought, for, for us, to ask that we not, because of those three Fs in a row, consider Paul R. Brown for a renewal. But hearing my colleague speak. But hearing my colleague speak about, I don't know the school, was Zeca? What's?
Zeca.
Okay. To speak, and, and speaking from his heart concerning children and those parents. Yeah, I have another look at Paul R. Brown. I looked at it again and I'm saying, am I looking at test data only, like the state superintendent has mentioned, or are we looking at kids? I personally will vote for Paul R. Brown. I was not going to do it when I came in this room. I thought about it last night, thought about it driving down. But neither of I'm going to vote to close any of the schools that my colleague has spoken of, in defense of, and I've heard it time and time again, give these kids other options. Options. I hear that time and time again, since I've sat on this board. And this is the way of giving them options, I believe. And I closed my book down, Paul R. Brown, I'm just closing it up right there, because I'm through with that one, as I'm sitting there. And I thank my colleague for reminding me that this is more about human beings than it is about numbers and things. And I'm through with it. And thank you for listening to me, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Hall, for your comments. Mr. Blackburn?
Ms. White, I'm always a learner and so I want to learn about this process. I'm sure every process we have is flawed. I'm sure every process has good things and bad things. But I would ask us to look at all of this very carefully, because as my esteemed colleague said, this impacts a lot of children, a lot of parents, a lot of lives. So I would ask you, is this the right process or is this the process that we're charged with? So you don't have to answer that, but it is, it's a greater question for me as a board member here, as your newest board member and wanting to learn what is best for the students of this state.
Excellent comments.
Did I understand quickly, Madam Chair, did you mention the fact I heard it last